Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Aquilina Howell Building to our October 13th Business School Board Meeting. And the first item on the agenda, I want to introduce to you our new school board member. His name is Upurva Strivastava. I think I got that pretty close. He said we could call him AP for short, so thank you. He is a James S. Rickards High School senior in the IB program. He has tons of activities and honors. I'll just give you a few. He's in the Key Club, the Capital Regional Medical Center Youth Volunteer Program, the Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare Junior Volunteer, he's Public Speaking and Debate Club, Model UN, Brain Bowl, Science Olympiad, swim team. We are so happy to have you on the school board. Please welcome, and I know you're about to lead us in the pledge, so. Can you do that at this time?
If everybody could stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Do you have a thought for the day?
A thought for the day. So, the school year's just started, and that means that in the new school year, you're going to meet a bunch of new people. You're going to forge a lot of new bonds, a lot of new friendships, new relationships, and that means keeping track of a bunch of new people. But, one thing I'd say to not forget is always keep track of yourself. That means maybe once a week, once every two weeks, sit down and reflect on where you are, where you want to be, what you think of yourself, and really have a mental check-in with yourself to make sure that everything is going okay with you, because we always need to be looking out for number one, which is ourselves. And if you love yourself, then it becomes incredibly easy to love others.
What a nice thought for the day. Thank you so much.
That was very well said, and AP, I'd like to welcome you.
Yes.
So I guess we have both ends covered, although the middle is run by the dominant group. But, no, excited to have you on for the next year and your leadership, not only at Rickards High School, but for all of the 33,000 students in our entire school system. You are their voice, and now is your chance, and we're excited to have you. I'm also excited to hear that you love your new classrooms at Rickards High School. I guess 50% are in the new building, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep. They're very nice. Blew my expectations out of the water, actually. Incredibly clean, super convenient, and the classrooms are huge. They have a bunch of resources, new boards. It's actually great. I'm really happy to have it.
Well, I'm excited to hear that. This is exactly why we did it, was for you and the students that will follow in your footsteps as we do another addition next year, and then the courtyard in the years to come. So, again, look forward to your service over the next year as a member of the board.
I'm excited to be here.
Welcome. Okay. And just to say, Mr. Jones is out of town, and Ms. Rasmussen is on her way. And Ms. Bowen, would you please do our changes and additions?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Superintendent recommends approval of the changes and additions as will be read at Item 19.05, Elder Care Services, Inc., Foster Grandparents Program Memorandum of Agreement, final language just reviewed and approved. Add Item 19.06, PTSA, between the School Board of Leon County, Florida, and AMI Kids, Tallahassee, Inc. Number three, add Item 19.07, relocation of second chance school, final language just reviewed and approved. Number four, the total amount for Item 19.01 was adjusted from $130,000 to $130, $130 and $500, okay, per the amount that was agreed upon during mediation. This also reflects a $500 adjustment to the total settlement for Brewster, $55,500. Number five, add transportation updates as Items 504, reports to be heard.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move the approval, Madam Chair.
Ms. Striplin?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Okay. Thank you. And I believe we have a spotlight tonight, Mr. Superintendent, special one from Oak Ridge Elementary School.
Yay.
Yes, ma'am, and Madam Chair, this time I'd like to call the proud principal of Oak Ridge Elementary School, Dr. Jasmine Smith, up to the podium to recognize our special guest.
Good evening.
I'm Jasmine Smith, very proud principal of Oak Ridge Elementary School. I actually am going to allow our reading coach, Belisa Hill, to come up and share in our recognition of our students this evening. We're so pleased to be able to recognize members of our Epic Book Club. These are some of our, where they are currently rising, they are currently third grade students, but we're rising third grade students at the time. And Ms. Hill will come up and talk about our book club and why we are so proud to celebrate with these boys and girls this evening. Ms. Hill?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am so pleased with these students. They were charged to read nine books over the Epic, over the summer. The students read 409 books. Students were chosen because over the summer, a lot of times, kids, they lose things from not reading their learning and knowledge, and so we wanted to make sure that our students continue reading over the summer. We wanted to make sure that their fluency increased, their comprehension, they kept on target with that, their vocabulary. And these books that they chose, they were high context, high text, nonfiction and fiction books. The students, they read nine books, but then every time they read, they kept reading more and more books. They weren't, they weren't only reading fiction books, they were reading nonfiction books, too. And once they came back to our book club meeting, they were so happy, they were eager to share their thoughts, they were able to collaborate, they had great conversations. The time at the book club, it was in two hours there, but it seemed like the time flew by, and the kids didn't want to leave. The parents would come into the media center, and they would just be waiting on the side, smiling really bright at the students, and they would just listen, and just like, oh my gosh, is that my child? But it really was, and they are, I am so proud of them, and I just can't wait to see how much progress and growth that they make this school year.
And so we do have some certificates. We do have some certificates, if you can indulge us with that. But I do want to say at one very important point, because Ms. Hill shared that these boys and girls read over 400 books this summer, but I want to be sure that we acknowledge that we're talking about a total of 10 of our third graders who did this, not our entire third grade. So just imagine when we open up the Epic Book Club to all of our third graders this year, how many books these boys and girls will read. And as we prepare to pass out the certificates, I'd also like to have the parents of these boys and girls stand, because they are also a part of our Epic Book Club, and we could not have done this without their support. We are a team, we are a family at Oak Ridge, so at this time, we'll present certificates to our boys and girls. Ms. Hill?
Kalani Johnson. Carson here. Raina Count. Are you William? Thank you all so much for your hard work and dedication.
And thank you for allowing us to celebrate our boys and girls tonight. Great things go on at Oak Ridge Elementary School every single day, and we're so pleased to be able to celebrate with you. Thank you.
Yes. Dr. Smith, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just before this wonderful group moves?
Yes.
Could they step up to the microphone and just tell us who they are?
Of course.
Okay.
Okay. Carson, can we start with you?
Give us their names and something more to brag about. Oh, look at that smile.
Is there a stool down there?
I don't see one. No, sir. I don't.
All right, we, that's all right, we can see him.
Yeah. His name is?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Carson Garrett. I have been on this Epic Summer Book Club. I've loved it, I've loved to read, and I'm so glad I'm here today.
See, he had a message. Oh. Very good.
Good afternoon, and my name is Raina Count. And I've been on Epic, and I like it so much.
Wonderful. Yes.
Hello, my name is Caleb McMillan. I love this website Epic, because me and my brother enjoy reading it together.
All right. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Kalani Johnson, and I love reading, so Epic is the perfect thing for me.
All right.
Hello, and my name is Ari Williams, and I would love to do Epic Book Club.
Great. Can we get a picture with these guys? Let's take a picture.
We want to get, can we get a picture?
Thank you again.
We're going to come down and take a picture so they can have it for the parents.
I figured if they were good readers, they were also good speakers, and they are.
Come on, guys, you want to come up here and take a picture? Congratulations. Who was the favorite? Favorite? What was it? Pete. I read Pete Kev. Come on, come on. Congratulations, guys. All right. Congratulations.
children and those teachers and the principals, so it's so wonderful to start our meeting on that happy note. And next, we are going to do reports to be heard. Let them get out. It looks like we have DAC none-to-date, SDAC none-to-date Title I, so we are going to have a transportation update.
Madam Chair, if I may, as Director Joe Anis and Pat from Edgelog come to the podium. As you all are well aware, we've had some major issues with our Transportation Department in routing and getting school started this year. No one's more disappointed than I am. I felt as though it was important for you as a board to get the information firsthand from Mr. Joe Anis and from the representative, Pat, the representative from Edgelog, that was flown down from their headquarters, to exactly what led to yesterday's occurrence and what steps they're recommending being taken moving forward. A little history about Leon County Schools' relationship with this company dates back to 2008. Leon County Schools entered into a contract for $386,000 with Edgelog over a five-year period, with an additional $111,000 to be paid over the course of the next four years At that time, the thought was to lead in this direction of trying to optimize routing and routing systems and to track drivers. For some reason, we never engaged. I can't speak to exactly what occurred or what didn't occur, or what occurred. I know what didn't occur is we never attempted the optimization that we paid them for. For the time period after that, from 2013 through current, we paid Edgelog about $40,000 a year to maintain some of the GPS tracking that we had on our vehicles. Mr. Joe Anis came to me a year and a half ago, maybe, and said, "Look, we've been partnering with this company for a number of years, and would like to look at taking advantage of the routing component of their program." And looking and looking, there in Broward County, I think, a number of counties, and not only in the state of Florida, but throughout the country. So we went on a exploring event, got some more data, and been working over the course of the last year to implement a new routing plan that would first and foremost provide for the safety of our students, so we could better track them, because in years past, we'd pull up to a stop, kids would get on a stop, we'd take them to school, we had no idea who the children were. In the afternoons, we'd pull up to a stop, we'd open the doors, and the kids would get off. So first, in the name of safety, and then second, in the name of efficiency, I felt like this endeavor was certainly worth kind of restarting from back, dating back in 2008. Having said that, this has not been, you know, this was not something that was thought of at the beginning of the summer. It was actually, like I said, a year and a half ago, Manny came to me in the fall with potential implementation in January, and I said, "No, there's no way, I mean, we can't do that in the middle of the school year." But I think we were very optimistic and had high expectations for the possibilities, especially on the student tracking side, where we had some issues last year during our FTE window on identifying, it was an audit criticism, on identifying exactly who our riders were and who they weren't, and what monies we were, be able to collect, and what monies we were losing out on. So in that vein, which led us down this path, and now I've asked Mr. Joe Anis and Pat to talk a little bit, expand a little bit about the relationship over the last year and a half, and then to give further explanation in detail as to the events that occurred back during pre-planning week, which led up to the start of school yesterday. So, Mr. Joe Anis.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, board members. Let me just say, we have issues, and we have a lot of issues. And I assume, share that responsibility for having those issues. But we will right this ship, and I do want to say that we have some incredible drivers that are responding as best they can under duress circumstances, and many of them are under duress circumstances. But they've been great, and they will continue to be great. Yes, we've had a really good working relationship with the Edgelog folk over the last year. We've been inputting data, we've been working on many things, and we were ready. We were just plain ready until August 5th, when we had a fail in the data.
Can you speak up into the mic a little bit better?
On August 5th, we had a fail in the data. That was eight days ago, and lost an incredible amount of data that had to be restored, and among that data was all the ridership. So it's all, it's all being restored. At the same time, we're opening schools, and that was problematic. We are prioritizing, and we know we've got work to do, and we've made progress. Today was not as bad as yesterday, and tomorrow will be better, and the next day will be better, and we can assure you of that. We are prioritizing, I know you're hearing from ESC parents, Everheart parents, Pre-K parents, we're prioritizing those that have, are most vulnerable, are most needs. We're, you know, taking care of success, we're taking care of sale, we're taking care of ACE. We will be proposing that with the regular ridership, that we go back to a system of mirroring. We thought we would experiment with, not experiment, we thought it was a good idea, with a non-mirroring, that it had a greater efficiency, but it just plain doesn't work for Leon County.
Explain what mirroring means.
This is where a route in the morning for a bus driver will be, could be different in a route in the afternoon, and I would say that 30% of our drivers have a different route in the afternoon. So what we're proposing is to change that to where our drivers are doing the same route in the afternoon as they're doing in the morning. And we, you know, on the go ahead, we will, we will work diligently to make those repairs and fix that problem. And we also have a few issues with buses that are traveling great distances to get to their next route. We are proposing that we fix that also. With that, just let me assure you that we will be better each and every day, and we will right the ship, and it will be fixed. And with that, I'd like to let Mr. Starken, yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, at the appropriate time, you've set, you talked about mirroring, you talked about the distance between routes, I'm sorry, excuse me, you talked about mirroring and the distance between the routes, and prioritizing the most vulnerable students, ESC, Pre-K, and the other, success in ACE. What about the hazardous walking conditions that we've heard from so many of our constituents about?
And we're addressing those as they come in.
As a case-by-case basis.
Yes, case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Pat?
Hi, I'm Pat Starken. I'm the representative from Edgelog. I've been working with Manny and his team probably for about a year and a half in preparation of this. Mirroring is a way for a school district to consolidate routes, and the end result is to a planned reduce, a reduction of cost to the district. And that was the charge that we were charged with. And so the object of mirroring works in many districts. It may not be the perfect fit for Leon. So we're proposing that we move away from the non-mirroring to mirroring, and we have a plan in place to make that happen through an optimization through the program with just regular ed students. So it should be a quick, easy fix. The plan is for us to do it on Friday afternoon. We put the plan together today. And then, so next week, we'll have a look at the routes for the drivers, and then we'll have three-day selection. I might have that wrong, but they'll have ample time to look at the routes that they would prefer to have, and then the following Monday, we would implement those. So we had a, we had a little bit of a problem with our data. We had a really good plan as of July 29th. We download weekly in the summertime of student data out of the Focus program, so that we update the Edgelog program with the student data, and then we start routing those kids and get them on. On August 5th, which was a week later, we took a backup of the information, and then we downloaded, and something didn't go right in the download, so we attempted to get our backup up and going, but that data was gone. It was deleted by someone that was looking at a server and didn't realize the implementation, what would happen when they deleted it. So their goal was to just make the server have more space, and they didn't understand that we needed that data. Consequently, as of Tuesday of last week, we were working diligently to try to reinstall those runs and stops and students and everything that got removed. And it happened. We worked diligently both with Manny's team and the team in Montana that has worked endless hours. We have a huge team that's out there, they know what we're going through, they're doing everything that we can to right the ship, and we are partners with the district. There's no, that's why I'm here. I will be here next week, and I will be here the week after. We are going to make this work. And part of that making it work will be going to non-mirrored routes. But the data that we lost...
Mirror routes.
Yeah, but the data that we lost, and I'm sorry, I kind of got off track, and I apologize. The data that we lost caused us to get everything going, but it caused a push in getting that data to the drivers. It also caused a delay in getting the information to the students and the parents that needed to know what bus they needed to go on. Consequently, the first day of school yesterday, we created quite a bit of confusion in the afternoon, which caused a delay of buses leaving the school district. And obviously, everybody knows what happened. Today, we were better, because there was less confusion. The very first day for school, we ran in the morning, and we ran unmirrored routes in the morning, and we ran unmirrored routes in the evening. But in the morning, we had a little less confusion, as drivers would go to a stop, they would pick up the child and get them to school. When we got to the schools, there's quite a bit more confusion, and it caused a lot of delays. I would probably venture to guess that every bus was delayed, and we ended up having issues because of that. Today, we were a whole lot better, and we are in non-mirroring, but I believe that through the mirroring process, it's going to make the drivers happier, the parents happier, and so I think in line, it'll make it better for the school board, because I know that you guys got a lot of phone calls. Our goal, we love Leon County, we partner with him, and we are here to make it right.
Ms. Bowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you gentlemen for your presentation, but I think what I want to first do, having gotten a few calls from the community, is to apologize to the community for the inconvenience that this has caused. And I'm thankful for the work, and I'm appreciative of the need to keep us technologically in the 20th century, but I think an apology is in order, and so I make that particularly to those individuals who have called with the ESC students, and having, now being a grandmother with an ESC child in the system, I need to say to those parents that I understand how a disruption in the scheduling of a child can cause an imbalance in that child's life and in that family's life day to day, but to apologize to those students. And I have to tell you that I'm also aware that we have wonderful drivers, I've been with them through the years. I did miss this year's orientation, I'm not sure how that escaped me, but I do recall there being a theme one year, and it was "safe and on time," and they were very proud of that. And so at this point, I'm happy to know that there are steps being taken to get us back to the safe and on time, with safety being our first priority. Never will we lose that. So I applaud the bus drivers for sticking in there and working through, and I applaud the superintendent for continuing to work and to hear now the changes that are going to be made. And so the community members are upset with us. They are very upset with us, and I hope that they might not be quite as upset at the end of this meeting as they have been before, and I ask them to continue to walk with us to get through this and to continue to be our partners. Our children are excited about school, and we want them to have the best, the best educational opportunities, because we've said on this board over and over that the school bus drivers, they are the first contact, they are the face of the school, they really serve as the superintendent's receptionist, whether he calls them that or not, and I think he does. So we want to thank those bus drivers for doing that. I just think that at this point, if we can continue to work along this, and I'm not familiar with mirroring, but I do know that as a little kid, I knew what my bus driver looked like, and so I would be out there looking for Ms. Coontz. I was going to ride Ms. Coontz's bus, I knew my numbers, but some of my other friends didn't, and so I'm concerned about, you know, some of the terminology and the usage and that kind of thing, just to be, you know, user-friendly, customer-service friendly. So I hope that mirroring considers that, non-mirroring, or whatever it is you do.
It absolutely does, and please do, accept my apologies to you. I share in this responsibility, and it's, it weighs heavy. Basically, the mirroring means Mr. Jones took me to school in the morning, and Mr. Jones took me home in the afternoon.
And he's going to put me off at the same bus stop he picked me up from, because...
Okay. Ms. Striplin?
Thank you.
Is that what we're doing?
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, this is, if you...
This is not an opportunity to speak from the audience. If you are a person to be heard, then you'll have an opportunity to be heard under Item 6.
Thank you for being here. I always say my neighbor on the board is the epitome of grace, and I wish I was more like her, but I'm not going to be as gracious, because we have taken the brunt of it the last few days, and that is nothing compared to what this staff has endured, nothing. And it's nothing to what our parents have endured. I'm the mother of six, and if I had to get all of my kids to school every day under what happened this week, I mean, I would be like a lot of them, just devastated. I mean, we've been bombarded with emails and calls and frustration, and the district has done nothing but tried to help, but we're, they're overloaded. So I don't, the questions are, I have several now, and they probably won't stop. So I don't, the questions are, I have several now and they probably won't stop. So my first question would be, some of the responses that we gave back, I think were issued to the paper today, was that the computer-generated routes that actually took longer than the time given. So can you explain that?
Because the drivers were giving the runs not at a favorable time. I'm sure they didn't know the routes as well as they normally would run them. Remember that it was the first day of school, so there's going to be some slight issues with the first day of school. It was certainly more than compounded with everything that was given to the drivers. We were certainly quite a bit better today. So as the drivers start to know their runs better, they will, the routes will become closer on time. But remember that we're going to redo those runs, give them an opportunity to test run those runs next week. And then we're going to implement a new plan. Is that the 26th, I believe?
So why wasn't the test run done in June when school first got out?
So, and as we had that glitch on August 5th and we lost that data, we didn't put the runs exactly together as they were because we didn't have a picture of those runs.
August 5th is two months after June. I don't understand why this was not implemented with our drivers at the very beginning of the summer.
Because you add students the entire summer, so the routes are going to change. But so as of, I think they test drove them July 20...
No, they test-run this past weekend.
So no good reason as to why they were not test-run, put out in June?
If they, they wouldn't be accurate in June. That's as simple, that's...
Our streets haven't changed in Tallahassee. They haven't. So if a product was issued, so I'm just wondering why we didn't give... I wasn't aware that our parents were not alerted until their pickups until three days, two days before school. Last Wednesday, I think, was when I started first getting phone calls. And I really had no awareness that there was not a test run done earlier in the summer. Our parents were not alerted. I know we sent out lots of emails, hey, there's going to be changes. And we thought they were going to be for the better. So I'm not hearing really any good reason as to why it wasn't done in June. I just want an honest answer.
We made the decision to wait until promote and assign. That occurred on 24th and it was available.
24th of?
July.
Of July.
And so we, on the 26th of July, we ran the optimization in the routes. And then we had a bell time glitch with that. Then we had to run the optimization again on July 28th, which was a Sunday. So on July 29th, when we had scheduled dry runs, we weren't able to do them because we were then reviewing the routes before we disseminated. Then in a couple, then we had in-service. I'm making excuses, but...
So we have no good, we have nothing to tell our parents as to why we didn't test this in June? I mean, that's what I'm hearing. So I'm just going to stop with that question and move on because I know other board members have questions. So when, our bus drivers are going to be included in the decision-making moving forward? Is that what I'm hearing?
We are working with the...
No?
We are working with the compound managers. They are getting feedback from the drivers. And we have a scheduled meeting first, well, right after the morning runs in the morning. And yes, they will.
They will be included?
If I may, I just need to, before we go down that. So a couple of things. One, when they talk about promoting assign, that's when we promote all the fifth graders to sixth graders and all the eighth graders to ninth graders. This system is run based on student enrollment and the students' ridership from last year. So the schedule is built around students that rode school buses last year. And they couldn't really, they couldn't finish it until promoting assign was done so they would know who all the sixth grade students were and who all the ninth grade students were and who the kids were that got promoted. I don't know if that makes any sense or not.
It does. And I get some of that, but it's more of just driving the streets. Like just, this is going to be a practice route. Let's drive these and see what time it takes.
Yeah, the problem was they weren't assigned yet. Look, the other thing, as far as moving forward, we are meeting tonight, after this meeting, with the team. And we're going to meet again tomorrow morning. And I will have an announcement at 11 o'clock. I'm going to have a press conference to talk about a strategy and a plan moving forward.
Okay. So my next question is, how long have you guys been doing this as Edgelog automated bus routes?
1977.
1977. So is there ever been a thought to protect a set of files on a server so they can't be deleted? Is that a possibility? Is that something?
I can't, I believe so. When we have a backup copy, it's normally there. I believe that that is now in place.
Okay. I would highly recommend that in the future. When the fail-in data occurred on August the 5th, why were we not made aware?
I mean, I know that the transportation team and ourself was fully aware of everything that was going on.
But the board was not?
Question for the superintendent.
I accept responsibility for that.
AP?
I'm not finished. Are the bus numbers going to go back to numbers instead of routes as far as the bus number changing and it having the route on the bus?
We are recommending keeping the route system because when a substitute bus will go out, they'll put the same route number. So there's not a issue of trying to be on the intercom every afternoon explaining the change of bus assignment. So they would just look for a route number.
So we're still staying with the route number and not the bus number?
We're recommending that we stay with the route number, yes.
Did we ask our bus drivers possibly what they felt about that? Was that something? I've heard, I think, from on both sides that, that there was an issue with the schools as well. Even the teachers, the administrators weren't sure what bus to put the kids back on because the number was different. And so now if they're doing the same, if we're going to revert back to going the same route morning and afternoon, should we not go back to the same bus number? Or put a route number on the bus?
We're still recommending a route number to alleviate that issue with substitute buses because that happens quite regularly.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now.
AP, you want to say something?
First of all, thank you for being here. I know Leon County is a county that's always, well, always tries to be transparent and upfront with their parents. So thank you for being here and answering our questions. I guess I'll just ask you some questions from the student perspective. I know this morning, I was hearing from a lot of my friends that have younger siblings who are talking about elementary school kids who were at their bus stops at like, what, 7:00, 8:00 AM in the morning and a bus just never came. That is an incredibly unsafe place to be. I mean, there's, these kids are alone, their parents have dropped them off with the expectation that a bus will come by and pick them up. So I think that was really irresponsible. If you do end up having those problems in the future, maybe have some sort of plan to, you know, have protection for these students. Also, when you say that all this data was lost, what type of data was lost? Was this like routes that you were going to send? Was this like addresses of students that you had, what schools they were going to? What type of data was lost?
So the data was pretty much ready for school starts. All the runs were ready, all the routes were ready, the kids were assigned. And we, it was virtually a data dump of information that came in. And for whatever reason, we lost, not student data, we lost the bus stop data. We lost the routes to the, the runs to the routes. So that's the data that ended up having to be reassigned to the students' bus stop as well as assigning it to a bus run.
So when you have all this data, and I don't know if I remember correctly, but you said that this data was lost because of human error, because someone may have deleted it from the server. What, if any, what precautions did you have from a human coming in and deleting these files from the server? Because human error is something that can still happen in the future.
What precautions did we take prior to that? We didn't take, obviously, we didn't take enough because it happened. So they have a lockdown procedure that locks those from being deleted. So that won't happen again.
Okay. I also recommend, I know, I don't know how much this would cost, but it seems to me that all of this is digital. I feel like it would help to have some sort of paper trail for this.
A young person saying that?
That's what I was thinking. Old school. Old school.
We appreciate paper more than you may think.
Welcome to the board, AP. You and I'd be good friends for paper.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. It's clear that we're all disappointed about this. I know you are. I know the superintendent is. We all are. We're very disappointed and, you know, everybody wants to know why and how. But I do want to take us back to why we went to this system because I think that's important. You know, as a former principal, I can remember getting on the intercom and saying, today, bus 12 is bus 15 and bus 13 is bus 28. And it's, that's awful. So I'm just agreeing with you that a routing system that never changes, the students can learn what their route is. And so the bus can put the route number on there. And I do think that will simplify a lot of confusion, especially at the end of the day when kids are trying to get on the right bus. So even though it's a new system, it's, it'll be stable and I think that'll be very helpful. But the thing that we, as a board, were excited about and were like, go, is that we were going to be able for the first time to track students. And if Mrs. Jones calls and says, is my child on the bus? We were going to be able to say, yes, that child got on at 2:32 and should be home at such a time. And, you know, for as long as I've been in the school system, which is 40 years, we never could do that. And that was a scary thing as a, as a school leader to not be able to tell the parent for sure if their child had gotten on the right bus or not. So I think, you know, once you get this sorted out, that is going to be a huge improvement. The parents are going to really appreciate that they can, you know, that's a big safety thing. So I know that's why we all bought into this originally because that was going to, that is going to be great. And you are going to keep up with that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I heard you say that you are going to go back, just for the person's question in the audience, you are going to go back by the 26th, did you say?
Yes.
To one bus driver on each route. We're calling that mirroring or non-mirroring?
It's mirroring.
That's mirroring. We're going back to mirroring. We just aren't familiar with that term.
The same bus driver.
Keep the same bus driver, same route. So that'll be great. And I do have a question, though, about courtesy stops and about how far, if someone is outside the two-mile zone, what is our metric on how far that child should have to walk or get to the bus stop?
Metric, I think they've, the metric that they put in the system is a half a mile.
A half a mile.
Not for courtesy stops.
Not for courtesy stops. I'm talking, I asked two questions. The first, but let me ask the second question first. What is the metric? If a student is outside the two-mile zone, what is the metric for the farthest they would be from a bus stop to be picked up or dropped off?
The district necessarily doesn't follow Florida State. I believe Florida State is one and a half to two miles. I don't have it exactly. It's one of the two. One and a half.
To a bus stop?
To a bus stop. We have gone to a half a mile.
Okay. Because there, when I looked at some of the routes over the weekend, they were, you know, they were having to go to 10 miles to get to...
And those, and those, those need to be adjusted, no doubt.
Okay. So I want you to guarantee the public that we are going to have...
Metric that we use is a half a mile.
Half a mile.
And we're, yes, we, we are going to tweak and fix those, those that are more than a mile, you know, as quickly as we can.
Good. Because, you know, the child has to get there and then they have to ride on a bus for maybe an hour or so. I think that's, that was one of the biggest flaws that I saw was the distance that people had to get to the bus stop. And that's a lot of what I heard from the public as well. So thank you for answering that. And the second question is about courtesy stops.
Courtesy stops. We're keeping all courtesy stops for the elementary school children. And then we have a few routes for Title I.
And what about for safety concerns that I think Ms. Rasmussen brought up? If someone has to cross a ditch or they have to cross a four-lane highway, what are we doing about that?
We're adjusting the stop as we can, yeah.
Okay. So just to be clear for parents, if they have a situation like that, are they to still contact you, the transportation, and tell you that? Or are you supposed to know that already or what?
Under normal circumstances, we can respond very quickly to help with those. Under the duress that we're under right now, you know, we are prioritizing just establishing the system. So, and then we can, then we'll be able to tweak the system.
Okay. So those are pretty big tweaks for parents. So you're saying...
There's no doubt. There's no doubt.
So I just, I want everybody to be here.
We just have a whole lot of ESC kids that...
They're priority number one. I think we all agree with that. And then any kind of safety issue of children having to cross four-lane highways and that sort of thing.
We've had issues with Everheart and I think we've got them resolved as of this afternoon.
Okay. So if a parent during the week still has a stop where they feel like their child is having to cross a dangerous road or something, they are to still call your office? Or I would think email would be better because then you have a written record of it.
We actually have a form online that we steer them to. And if they're unable to handle it online, it's a hazard walk condition form.
Hazardous walk, I just want to repeat that so that people know.
Hazardous walk conditions form, yes.
And that's on the transportation website that parents can fill out?
And they would fill it out and then it'd get reviewed.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Like I said, we're all disappointed, but people have a few more questions. So go ahead, Ms. Rasmussen.
Thank you for being here. I, I want to understand how the routes were determined. Because some of the routes that I've seen, I can imagine if somebody in Montana is looking at a map, that it looks perfectly reasonable that someone could walk down I-10 and North Monroe Street and cross over, you know. But in reality, crossing a seven-lane Monroe Street to get to, well, first walking in a ditch down Meridian Road to get to John Knox, to get to Monroe Street. So how were those routes determined? And where is the missing component of somebody visually thinking about walking to the bus stop from wherever?
So the plan was to use the majority of the bus stops that were done last year. I came last year and I sat down with one of the transportation people that was very knowledgeable at the time. We adjusted boundaries. We adjusted hazard zones. We adjusted the regular school boundaries. And then we placed stops where she was extremely familiar with Leon County. And the plan was to use those stops. Some of those stops got deleted on July 5th. I don't know why. I knew that, excuse me, wrong date. I apologize. It was August 5th. I misspoke. And when those got deleted, what we tried to do is assign the quick kids as quick as we could. If there are hazard conditions out there, we need to adjust those as quickly as possible. My recommendation would be please make a phone call to the Transportation Department. We'll address them as fast as we can and adjust.
I'm just trying to understand that, and I keep coming back to your name, Edgelog, meaning that you're a corporation that serves educators and educational institutions.
That's correct.
As opposed to, you know, I mean, we had a consultant who was, had expertise in logistics and, you know, from UPS. Well, UPS can probably throw the box across the ditch, but we've got children that we need to help. You know, and I just don't understand why or where, how that fell through, where, because I'm personally aware now in the past 72 hours of many, many stops that I would not want my child to have to walk, you know, in a dark, wet ditch on the, on the shoulder of a road that really has no shoulder. I mean, you can't walk down Old Bainbridge Road or North Meridian Road, never mind.
Or Bannerman.
Or Bannerman or Oxbottom or McLellan. So I just wanted to just restate that while I appreciate you standing here and taking this and we're grateful for your assistance in helping to right the ship, and the same for you, Mr. Joannis, and your entire team. This is not, none of us want to be in this position and I know you don't want to be. And so I just wanted to try to get to the, to fully understand how this ever happened to begin with. Because I personally felt a lot of responsibility for this when I first found out about it. And the reason is, and I'm going to restate something the chair said just a minute ago, but I remember about a year and a half ago, we had a school bus with elementary school children on it that had a wreck. And the police department detained these precious little elementary school children on the shoulder of the road... on the shoulder of the road to find out their name and address. And these little guys didn't all know their address. And the point was, we didn't have a manifest. We didn't have, like, an airplane. They know who's on the bus. And I thought, that horrified me to think we didn't have in place, with technology being what it is today, the ability to tell parents that Johnny got on the bus at this stop at five, you know, 7 o'clock, whatever it's supposed to be, and back off. And so that is the original impetus in my mind, why I wanted to go toward, to, to take this, this journey with you. I also felt that having an education-based centered vendor would be in our best interest. And I still hope that proves to be true. And I know that we had a long-serving experience with you all with regard to the GPS, which we felt was a positive relationship. So we anticipated that you would be able to deliver that which was promised. I do seem to recall, though, that there was also a PR component. And I was struck by this, the juxtaposition of, on ABC News, the other more, two days ago, when all this was, sorry, blowing up on us, they had a story about exactly what we were trying to accomplish. I don't remember the name of the vendor. I don't remember the name of the town. I don't remember the name, which state it was in. But it was a great, positive story. And because that district had, they'd make videos of how, given, totally, telling the parents way ahead of time, this is what's gonna happen. Little Johnny's gonna need to swipe his card, or whatever it was gonna be. They had a picture of the driver showing the, how they were gonna utilize that technology. And I thought, if I remember correctly, that, that our contract had some kind of public relations piece that we chose not to implement, didn't?
No, no, we, we, we have the tablets and we have the hardware in the buses. And we chose to wait till after we've started the school year and implement the tablets.
I'm remembering.
Okay.
One school at a time.
Okay, okay.
Quite frankly.
So, so in fairness, and just as if, from a human perspective, I want to acknowledge that I don't think this is just a matter of convenience for parents. I think it's a matter of fear and worry and concern for their babies. And that would be my concern. So let's, let's frame that in, this is not just a matter of convenience. This is not, this is about, my child was on the road and didn't, nobody picked him up. And so for the parents and for my neighbors and people like him who get out there in their vests that they've bought for themselves to help our little ones get on the buses, thank you. Thank you for being a concerned community like you are. And thank you for helping us figure this out. At the same time, I want to say, we are headed in a better direction. The impetus for this whole conversation was to make things better, not worse. And so, yeah, we had a problem, and we continue to have a problem. And they're promising us that they're going to fix it. I appreciate your dedication. I know you guys, you, the superintendent, your staff, you've been at the Transportation Center. You attempted to put in a call center, which we're ill-equipped to do, I'm sure. And I constantly find myself in different space, not education-related. But just to thank you for what you're going through. And I want to acknowledge that this hasn't been easy on our staff, on our drivers, on our teachers, principals, parents, none of, nobody. Us included, but, but, so, and, you know, Mr. Wallen used to always say, we are in the education business. That means if we can't learn from our mistakes, nobody can. So that's what we're here to do. We're gonna, we're gonna pull up our bootstraps and learn from this mistake and make sure something like this doesn't happen again. So while, on the one hand, maybe I find myself somewhere between, you know, frustration and anger and grace and forgiveness, because everybody makes mistakes. And so, you know, we, we need to work together to make it all okay. So I'm, until we hear otherwise, I'll pause for now. Thanks.
Can I ask one follow-up question?
Yes.
Just on the courtesy routes, again, that's something that's been a real difficult issue to tackle and seems to be a predominant amount of the cases. To fill out a form online and wait for a committee for 14 days just doesn't seem fair to our parents at this point. Can we come up with any other solution?
We can work on that.
Our, our community would appreciate that.
AP has something he wants to say.
Yeah, just one thing to add. So what I've taken from this entire discussion that we're having is that, in the future, communication is going to be your best friend. You said that these routes, that when they're decided, they're given to the drivers an ample amount of time so that they know where they're going and how they're gonna get there, right? Right?
Yes.
Okay, so if they are given to the drivers in an ample amount of time, is there anything stopping you or, you know, the board from sending those routes? Sending at least the places that parents, children's, or children are going to be to the parents?
It's on the website. So there, there is an application called Web Query that is on the district website currently. And it directly links into the system. So if a parent types in their address, it'll tell them if they're eligible for transportation or not eligible. And if they are eligible, it'll tell them where the bus stops are. So we, we definitely want to promote that because that's how parents and families can find that information. In addition to that, we have printed a hard copy, or actually a PDF file, sorry, no, no paper. It's a PDF file that is on the district website as well, that by school, it lists every stop and every road.
Okay, thank you.
So one last thing, and I know you're already on this, but waiting for promote and assign is too late, right? Because we don't get that till almost August the 1st. And so I just, we'll have to figure out something else, right? So that we can know this a lot sooner. I know that the, how the district functions on promote and assign. But I'm sure that we actually do know who's gonna be promoted much earlier. And maybe we can come up with, we can come up with a fix for that. Because that seems to me the crux of the problem, is you had to wait till almost August 1st to know who you were routing for. Is that correct?
Can I answer that one? So as I, as I stated, I, I was here last summer and we started this process. So this process has, has not been just since July, August, August 5th. It, it has been a process in place for over a year. And, and one of the, one of the suggestions was to go in, in live in, in January. Well, we, it was recommended for us not to do that. So in, in March, we do, in, in the computer system of Edjulog, we, we do a promote and assign. So it, it was, it was done. And, and so we take all of the kids that, a second grader and a third grader, virtually their route, and the stop doesn't change. So that's a good thing. When you have the transition year, like a fifth grader to a sixth grader, we assign that student to their boundary school until the actual promote and assign completes. And when we did that promote and assign on August 5th, I need to get my dates right, a lot of things happened. Secretaries in, elementary secretaries came back to, to school. And over the summer, they, a stack of students leaving the school district have gone. We have another stack come in of brand-new students. And, and then we have changes of address. And so it, it, it was a lot of things that went into that. But about 3,500 students changed from one week to the next. And, and there was, so there was
Third.
It's not an excuse. It's not an excuse. It, it, and so I think we also need to put some things in place so that we can avoid that for next year. Because when, when the SIS system rolls over, it's gonna create some automatic issues, or not issues. It's gonna correct information that's gonna come in. So the sooner that we can do that, the better, the other. And, and so I think we need to take some steps in order to plan for that a little better.
Thank you. All right. I think that'll make a big difference, too.
A couple of comments, and Pat and Manny, I appreciate you standing up here. And it's, it's our responsibility. And, you know, we all have taken ownership. No one more, no one more than me. And we're gonna get this resolved. We're gonna get it resolved very quickly. Because I've heard, as the board members have from many, many people. And I have some, some serious concerns about the routing and, and what we, what we sent out and what was actually executed. And I'll be making a decision tomorrow morning about a plan moving forward. But it will, that actually will be made swiftly. Because I can't, I can't endure this much longer. So I, but I appreciate you being here. So one thing I'd like to, as a former high school principal, every year when we build a master schedule, and you push update, and then you, and then you kind of see how many kids are scheduled, and then you kind of tweak some things, and you push update. And the more you do that, the cleaner it gets. After that, after that data dump incident on August the 5th, we lost our complete master schedule. So what they had to do at, at that time was to re-input all of that data over the course of the next 48 hours and then push it out. Well, the thing that wasn't done, in order to get it to the drivers by that weekend, in, in order to try to make some sense of it with the changes that we had. But we had put people on notice a year ago of what was, what we were gonna, what we were gonna try, right? And we may have tried it for a year and said, you know what? That didn't work. Or we may have tried it for a year and said, man, that was awesome. And look at, look at what it did on the safety side. Look what it did on the efficiency side. Or, or we may have kept the safety piece, and the routing piece was like, man, there was too much confusion with not mirroring routes and the, and the driver here and the driver there. Although other districts do that. They go by routes and drivers change. But it may not have worked for our community, but we never would have known had we not tried, right? And there's nothing wrong with that. No one anticipated this. Because what the end result was, was a master schedule. It was, we have a lot of people who are, so I can't say what I want to say. But we had a master schedule that was unsuitable for public consumption. And especially for student consumption. Like Pat said, many of the routes, hazardous routes, courtesy routes, all that stuff, when humans tried to put it back in, it was put in in such haste that we never had a chance to go through it, to vet it, before we gave it out. Because we were in such a time crunch. So then what, what are the options? We try to rush back and recreate where we stopped last year. And I was advised, no, that we feel good. We got, we got 98% of it back. Though, let's, let's go with it. We can tweak it as we go. On that advice, I decided, let's roll and see. And having been a high school principal, knowing, now, if I'd have known that hazardous walking spots were eliminated and all these other things, we never would have done that. It was even talked about pushing the start of school back a day or two. That, that was mentioned in some of our discussions. And I was, I said, well, you know, one, you know, we have 10,000 kids that ride buses, but we have 20,000 kids that don't. And if it causes some delays for the bus riders, and we gotta try to figure things out for the first couple of days until I can digest exactly what just happened, four days before school started, then we were gonna do it. And, but I never expected what happened yesterday. Because we had, we had some bus drivers with, with one stop, and you had other bus drivers with 27 stops. And you had one bus going from, from Bannerman Road to Woodville Highway, to this highway and that highway. And I said it yesterday, and I'll say it again tonight, it was a colossal failure. At the end of the day, it's my responsibility. I can blame Edjulog for losing, losing it. And we'll have those discussions later. Right now, blames don't matter. What matters is what action we're gonna take moving forward and moving forward quickly. For the sake of our children that are here to speak tonight, especially those with special needs, and, and on behalf of our drivers, because they've been catching it for, for a day and a, for two days now.
Absolutely.
Right? And I just think I've been catching, they've been catching it, too. And I promise you, change is coming. It's coming swiftly. We're gonna make a decision and we're gonna roll with it, all right? And next Monday is gonna be nothing, nothing like what we experienced yesterday. So I appreciate the recommendations by Mr. Joannis, the recommendations by the, the team at Edjulog. Tomorrow morning, I'll be making a final decision as to what plans we, we take. But I've heard from drivers. I've heard from parents. And we're gonna get this right, and we're gonna get it right quickly. I can assure you that.
Very much. Shall we hear our persons to be heard?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have several persons to be heard. The first speaker is Ms. Brenda Scott. All persons to be heard. You have three minutes to speak. It's your opportunity to speak before the board and superintendent, and you will be timed. Come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, good evening and greetings. My name is Ms. Brenda Scott, PO Box 49 of Ochoabri, Florida. Now Tallahassee, I think it's Park Avenue 32301. Real quickly, like I said, greetings to the board, to the superintendent. We want to say thank you for being a diverse.
Ma'am, can you make sure you speak into the microphone? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, and I have, like I said, real briefly, because with the transportation people being the hot seat, and as Mr. Hannah said, he has been a principal. Ms. Joy, I loved your emotional from last week. But mine was real briefly. I'm following back up. Can we give these out real quick? And that will take up all their time. We have a lot of speakers tonight. And I'll probably begin with some of your principals. Really enjoyed Oak Ridge on a latter note. We have plays in here, and again, this is Live Your Life. And maybe get with some of the schools. Very talented Oak Ridge, and maybe do some plays. Christmas is in here, a little variety. And again, I'll follow back up from the July 30th meeting. It's like, here I go again. I'm still trying to get heard. Like I said, we do thank you for the superintendent, being a former principal, Dr. Michelle Gale, Ms. Georgia Joy. I enjoyed your emotional testimony from the heart last week. But like I said, I'm still dealing with the same thing, a little blocking, a little hindrance, a little haters. I don't know what's going on in personnel. You know, you call. To me, it's a little shameful, but embarrassing, but it is what it is. But we have to realize that, you know, prayer is a powerful tool. And even with us going on with the parents tonight, some of us have been parents, cool aunties, grandmas. And we hope and pray that transportation situation gets, you know, gets handled. And, but what I'm dealing with, like I said, last time I was here on July 30th, we were dealing with, you know, trying to get through, through personnel. I don't know what's going on there. You call, and I said, well, if you can get cousin KK from Quincy gets hired. And, and in turn, her cousin from Havana gets hired. And then it's like, okay, I got told something about back in 2000. And I said, well, back in the day, at some of the schools, when I was on the sub list, some people didn't even go to NIMs and subs. Some people wouldn't even go to bond and serve. Some people wouldn't even go to Riley and actually sub, and some of us did. So if I'm going back for something 2000, I'm telling you, this is the new 50, trying to age well and have your health. And again, I can remember, like I said, when Commissioner Bill Proctor was here, Reverend Proctor last week. Sometimes we have to just speak in divine truth. It's, you know, it's a team effort here with the school, the parents, administrators, teachers, staff, parents. It's kind of like a puzzle. You have to put everything together for a broader future for these kids. And like the young man, Mr. AP, we hope and pray you continue on the board and speaking up sometimes. So Lord have mercy, that you have to work together to get things done. So that's my three minutes. I know Ms. McKinnon Williams will be ready to stop you. And like I said, we thank you and pray that things work together.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker is Tawana Jones. Please give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the board, to the superintendent, to the bus driver and the Transportation Department. I'm here today regarding
Can you give us your name and address?
My name is Tawana Jones, 2500 Merchant Row Boulevard, Apartment 263. The reason that I'm here today is because my daughter is a student of Rickards High School. We have been at that stop, 2500 Merchant Row, for over a year. This week, they changed the bus stop that it's over Capital Circle, over there by the Department of Revenue. I'm at the beginning of Southwood, and she was there. She's a ninth grader. Prior to that, she never had to walk before. My daughter have had health issues, which has been documented on Leon County website, overcoming them. So for her to have to walk a six-lane highway, she just called me and said that this, her bus driver said, I can't drop you off at this stop that's been, the stop, the reason that I moved to that area, work extra hard to move to that area, so I can be able to give my daughter a safe way home that she has to now walk over a big, busy intersection. And the next stop that is close in there, which I've highlighted on the Google map for your, for you, to have, it is over 1.4 miles away. Prior to that, when we first went into the Endo Log, it was almost two miles away, 1.89 on Monday Street, from Southwood to Monday. That is her pickup area. So, and then they changed it. Her morning was 2,000. The problem that I'm having is that the next stop is on here, which is 2,000, which goes over by the Department of Revenue. You come over to the Southwood inside, he bypasses her to go 1.4 miles to Four Oaks Boulevard, past her old stop, her, to go 1.4 miles in front of FSU School, University School, for her to either walk that way or walk down a dangerous highway. The problem that I have is that she's been in the system. I've contacted representatives and saying that we're going to make sure things. I've been contacting since August 5th, when I decided to look in there, because of knowing that things can happen ahead of time. So I've been sending out emails. I also sent them a copy of my daughter's address and let them know what's the problem going on. My biggest concern is, I, I sympathize a lot with the ESC children, being a parent and also working in that field for many of years. I just want to know what is, or what are we gonna resolve? What are we gonna do to make sure that there's quality assurance as this new program is gonna be implemented? as this new program is gonna be implemented for the future, for, to make sure these routes are together, I mean, it's gonna be fourteen days, so I have to get off my job, I don't know.
Time, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker is.
Can we make a, can I make a comment real quick? I'm not gonna ask a question, but just, if we could have someone in Transportation in this meeting to be taking these notes, or if somebody's taking them, I mean, this is a great example, Southwood is all residential on that one side and all commercial on the other, there should be no pickups on that side of Capital Circle.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Gail is taking notes for every single speaker that comes back, comes up here, someone asked where Mr. Joannus, when I send him, he's got a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
Between now and then, and tomorrow morning, so, so, but we are taking notes of every single person that comes up with their, with their individual concerns.
The next speaker is Tasha Gronzik, forgive me if I misspelled that, or mispronounced that, please give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
It's phonetic, you were right, it's Tasha Gronzik, the address is twenty-eight-fifty-five Royal Palm Way. I am not going to hide how livid I am. It appears that the parents that are here tonight have done more research and begged and dug for information than apparently the school board has, and apparently just gave some kind of blind trust to Edgelog. You guys are statutorily tasked with running a safe and efficient school system, and having all these school bus stops removed, having this information not available to parents until the very last minute, is beyond unacceptable, in my opinion, and I feel like a lot of other parents' opinions as well. This is an unbelievable burden. I, according to the Edgelog gentleman, the information was reran in the system on the twenty-eighth, and it was deleted on the fifth. Historically, school bus routes come out on the Sunday before school, that would have been the fourth. If that information was in there on the twenty-eighth correctly, why weren't school bus routes released on the fourth? That, I'm, the courtesy stops, I was told that all elementary courtesy stops are being, they're still in the system, they are not. I have called, I have left messages, I've called the compounds, I've called the superintendent's office, I have emailed, I have called everyone, and I cannot get an answer as to what bus my children are to be on. I have put them on the bus, the only bus stop in my neighborhood, and the bus driver advised me it is an E.S.E. bus, and they are not allowed to take it. Based on the information for the bus routes, that means that there are only two buses for the entire elementary school, over six hundred students. I know not all the students take the bus, but not, does not require a sub-tion to understand that that is not sufficient for transporting our children. I just, it's incomprehensible that five and six-year-olds would be expected to walk half an hour, partially down Thomasville Road, where people drive like sixty-five miles an hour, that, that is not safe, that is not acceptable, and we cannot wait two weeks to put in request forms, it needs to be addressed immediately, it should have been addressed ahead of time, we shouldn't even be here tonight doing this. So, yeah, also, the disconnected information coming from your different offices is really appalling. I am here physically tonight because I have not been able to get answers, and I've been trying since Thursday, so, yeah, I'm just, please, let's not ever have this situation come up again. It's, I'm very, like I said, I can't even hold back my frustration, so, yeah, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Nikki Calloway. Nikki Calloway. Nikki Calloway. All right, that person is deemed to have waved. Next speaker, Jeff Haislip. Please come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Jeff Haislip, four-twenty East Park Avenue, apartment thirty-one. My favorite intersection is Paul Russell and Old, excuse me, Old St. Augustine, four brake crosswalk, no sidewalk, it's Tallahassee. August fifth, WCTV, very nervous, WCTV ran a story about the bus drivers being given the route, and the bus drivers balked at the routes they were given, and clearly, they were not listened to. Backups full and differential on the servers need to be examined, because clearly, they are not working. I had to do my own research on Edgelog and find out exactly what the parental reassurance is for this system, there is an app to be downloaded and used, the PR component that was referenced earlier, that did not make that abundantly clear, the PDF form that's supposed to be used for the hazardous walking conditions, is supposed to be downloaded, filled, and saved, it cannot be downloaded, filled, and saved, it cannot be saved, you have to print it out and mail it, or you have to use a third-party website to upload the form in order to save it, it's almost as if an artificial barrier is created. Blame is important, because it's the first step to accountability. I have nothing further.
Thank you. The next speaker, Greg Hand. Please give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Greg Hand, thirteen-ninety-four Silver Pine Lane, Tallahassee, Florida, three-two-three-one-two. I'm representing Luna Pines, Luna Manor area, there's about twenty children that are now being asked to walk down Bull Headley, that consistently has cars that go forty-five miles per hour down that road, there's nothing but two ditches on both sides, no sidewalk, and so it's just a very dangerous situation, certainly even more dangerous when the rain comes, that place just is a streamlined river that basically runs down there back into Lake Ammonia. So, I'm asking you guys to understand, as you guys have all made in the comments, we appreciate that, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Casey Puliza. Please give us your name and address, for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. All right, so, my name is Casey Puliza, thirty-two-six-two-seven Majestic Prince Trail, Tallahassee, Florida, three-two-three-zero-nine. This is Reagan Thursby, and she attends Mumford Middle School, and I want it, I don't know if you guys, this is the first time I've ever attended one of these, so I am nervous as well, but I'm not really sure if you answer questions, or if you don't, but I would appreciate if you don't, if there's a way that maybe Mr. Hannah could respond back to me later with some clarity, I'd really appreciate it. Sorry, I didn't have a sitter. So I did try to take some notes of the things that I was the most concerned about, and, you know, my, my first question was, is was there a cost savings for Leon County schools to switch to this new system? Why were all the routes changed in a state, and, and if they were, if safety was a priority, why are these kids crossing poor-lane highways? It just seems to be counter-effective. You had a kid go from Mumford Middle School to Georgia, then back to school, then out to Monticello, then back to school, that lived five minutes from Mumford yesterday. You had a special needs kid leave school in a bus, arrive to his, to his home in a van with no explanation as to why. I was told my child would be on bus twenty-four-oh-seven this morning, and that bus did not show up to get her, it was actually bus twenty-fourty. If the implementation was to improve identification of buses, it didn't work this morning either. My other question is, how was the data file rebuilt? Did you have to recreate the routes? I know they said they were rebuilt, but I would love some clarity on how that would happen. You said you just lost the routes, not the children's information that needed busing, how is it that you missed an entire group of E.S.C. kids needing transportation? I don't know how that happened, if you just missed routes, where did the kids go? Can you tell me how that happened? Why are schools unable to get information from the bus compounds during the day? They are not getting responses, leaving them panicked, unsure of what will happen with their E.S.C. kids. Mumford Middle School and Ms. Allen tried calling several times today to the bus deep, the bus compound, finally texted me at two and said, you're just gonna have to come get her, we, we don't know what's happening. This is a school, they can't even get answers, I mean, it's so disturbing. If E.S.C. kids have transportation needs within their I.P.s, how are we on day two of school, heading into day three, and not a single E.S.C. kid other than Reagan has a bus assigned to them at Mumford, other than, I mean, in their E.S.C. classes? And the only reason I think Reagan got a bus assigned to her this morning was because I was so loud yesterday. Like, I think that it should be all the E.S.C. kids, not just Reagan. She has thirteen kids in her class from all over, none of them have a bus assigned to them.
Time.
What exactly is being done to get these kids set up with transportation right now? And can you disclose what has done, what has been done, and what is going to be done to remedy this as soon as possible?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Marlee Shiana Lightfoot, forgive me if I mispronounced. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Marlee Shiana Lightfoot, my address is thirty-nine-seventy-one Gaffney Loop, and I just wanted to go over a few things I wish that Mr. Manning was here, because I sat in his office for a reasonable amount of time today. I sat at the compound for a reasonable time yesterday, looking for my lost two children and nephew until six o'clock last night. I had to leave my job that barely gives me leave time, because I have F.M.L.A. for my A.D.H.T. child, as well as a child that suffers from seizures. So, I just wanted to say thank you for the bus drivers, I actually witnessed three breakdowns while in the compound, that's ridiculous, those routes were not even possible. Let me go back to my notes, I'm, I'm a little nervous as well, I don't do public speaking, but I just wanted to go over a few things. For Mr. Manning, and the young man that was here, that stated that.
My husband, who is a deputy sheriff, has seen numerous people just fly around other vehicles, it's very unsafe for our children to walk, my son has been picked up at the end of our road for the past three years, I love my bus drivers, the bus drivers I've had have been wonderful, they've actually formed personal relationships with all of my children, I have ten, and they have formed personal relationships with all of our children, and I've never had issues with my bus drivers. And the familiar, I guess a familiar thing for a child is to see that same bus driver in the morning and in the afternoon, and I commend them all for what they do have to put up with, with all the children on the buses, because I've been behind some of the school buses and seen the kids in the back. I commend you guys for what you are trying to do for us, but this is a very failed system, what happened, and I cannot let him walk that distance, and I will only let him go to the end of Williams Landing, luckily, a bus did pick him up yesterday, because one of his friends told him, you need to pick him up, but they did not drop him off at Williams Landing yesterday afternoon, and he had to walk home, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Hayes Green. Please give us your name and address, in case I mispronounce, you have three minutes.
My name is Hayes Green, five-three-four-two St. Ives Lane, Tallahassee, Florida. First of all, I want to apologize, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board, for my outburst earlier, I'm just fed up, and I'm aggravated, I've been on hold since Thursday, I've been promised that I was gonna receive a return phone call, I'm still.
I gotta tell you, sir, if you run this situation like you run our school system, by the way, I prayed and voted for you, I gotta tell you, when a teacher screws up, we get let go, no questions asked. When a principal is hired to turn a D. school into a C. school, and it doesn't work in one year, they're fired or demoted. You need to do what you need to do, because the fact is, this is not working, it's not working for E.S.C. kids, it's not working for our I.B. kids, who are getting on vans that are not labeled. Nobody took into account sex offenders, nobody took into account delinquency, crime in areas, where is that data? I'm sorry to tell you, we are in whatever century we're in, but Tallahassee falls behind in my view today, because there is absolutely no reason why this has happened, and I am gonna be very vocal, because I don't care if I lose my job over this, I'm speaking for every parent of every E.S.C. child that couldn't be in this room today, or for my husband, who just got told yesterday, if he misses or is late one more day, he will be let go from his job, because he took care of my child last week for five to six hours a day, so I could do my job as a teacher, and I went back to school from one, two o'clock in the afternoon, I was there on the weekends, working seven, eight to twelve hours, and you can look it up in the cameras, because I am dedicated to the children I serve, and I am beyond offended that children at my neighborhood who go to Mumford, their parents heard that the bus was not coming from me. So when are you gonna tell us when you're gonna fix this mess? Because I cannot take two weeks off from work, and right now, I'm about to go on A.S.O.P. and put in for the next three days. Thank you.
The last speaker we have is Olympia Bates, Battles, I'm sorry. Please give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Olympia Battles, four-five-four-nine Wesley Drive, I'm in Greens with my sister over here. This whole system is suck. From the experience that I had since May twenty-eighth, since school got out, I have been calling your phone every day since that day, and still haven't gotten a response, anything. We need better, I'm a driver, we need better support from you, the schools, as the drivers, we catch it from the schools, the parents, everybody, but it starts from the head, and you are the head, but the body parts are falling apart, and it's sad, it is really sad, and I thank God that all my children are grown, because dealing with this, I had to literally not do my job and pick up a child that was walking down Appalachian Parkway. Now, when do y'all, or you, consider putting the drivers into the decision to make these type of changes? These people don't, they didn't know anything, and I feel like, when you find out that we had to pick routes Thursday before the Monday school started, we should have kept it the way it was, and that, that was really, really sad. I have never been here, but I literally, I needed my voice to be heard, and I need my face to be seen. I'm a parent, and like I said, thank God, my children are not, my oldest two daughters are in high school, and my oldest daughter drives, but if my children was in elementary, and then for you to tell me to take a elementary kid home, a kindergarten, and not know if the parent is gonna be there, that was crazy, that was really, really crazy. I literally wanted to tell you, while you was on the phone with that principal, you come get that child, and you take him home, and you sit there, and you wait. And then I still had to go back to Hertzfield to drop off kids where they did not know where they lived. I really don't care about losing my job either, I'm, I would take a pay cut at this point, and then for you to tell your drivers in, in service, they can just get up and leave, you need us, we don't need you. The parents needs the drivers, so you walk.
Madam Chair, we do have one more speaker, Lavora Hertens, did I, I'm sorry, Hertens, am I saying that correctly? Lavora Hertens?
I gave you the piece of paper that wrote down what I wanted to say. My name is Lavora, I'm, I'm not here about.
Can you give us your address, and then you'll have three minutes?
Seventeen forty, Riverberg Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm, I'm here in reference to the BPK situation, that there are no openings or slots available in public school in Leon County, and, I mean, the school's right next door to me, and I can't get my child in there, because there's no slots available, I don't understand why you can't open more slots, there are parents calling and asking for more slots available, what's, what's keeping those slots from being open? Is it tax dollars? What's, and I'm not getting any answers, I'm just getting like, there's no more slots, and that's it. It doesn't matter whether they're a Title I school or not, there are no slots available in Leon County. It doesn't matter whether they're a Title I school or not, there are no slots available in Leon County. How do I get those answers? Who answers those questions?
Yes. So, this is public comments, an opportunity for you to give your comments. You've asked your questions. The superintendent's now gonna direct staff to get your contact information and they will put you in touch with someone who will answer your questions specifically. I'm not sure that folks here-
I just wanna comment that I did call several different places. They were rude and they were saying, you know, "You should have did this a long time ago." My child's in the system just like anybody else's child and if the slots aren't available, make some more slots. I'm not the only parent, you know, when I call all these places, the employers are saying like, you know, you're the 300th person that has called. So, it's not just me. A lot of us are not getting these slots because there's none available.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Chair, there are no more speakers.
I want to thank all the speakers that came tonight. I know we listen, we're listening. We heard you. We appreciate you coming. We're sorry that you've had to go through this. We're sorry. You know, everybody on this dais is very sorry. And I I take the superintendent at his word that we're gonna get this right and it's gonna get fixed. And I know it's not gonna be quick enough because it needs to be yesterday. But, you know, we're just gonna trust a new superintendent to make this right. And I know you've got a big, heavy lift here. And we're behind you, but we're also behind the parents, of course. So, thank you all for coming. We really do appreciate it. And it's good to, it's hard to hear what you had to say, but it's good for us to hear what you had to say. So, we're gonna move on with our agenda. We have, and you're welcome to stay, but I understand if you need to get home to your kids, so we're gonna move on. Okay. We have items of consent. Do I have a motion?
You do, Madam Chair. Remove the items of consent.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes. Going down to 19.01. Dent Stunlap and Alicia Brewster versus Leon County School Board.
So, 1901 is a settlement agreement. This was a bus accident that occurred back in April of 2016. And we came to a settlement agreement with these two individuals that were injured in the accident. And you see them out there. $130,500 to settle this bus incident from 2016.
Have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes. Next one's 19.02.
1902. What was the thing I was supposed to do? Raise my hands? Take a deep breath? It's like a- So, this is a settlement agreement between a lawsuit filed in federal court by Mr. Stephen Sheldon and Leon County School Board and James Rocky Hannah III. This was a suit that was brought, the plaintiff seeking damages for loss of employment. Contract was not renewed. The claim was based on political affiliation and age discrimination. The original ask, we went to mediation, the initial ask from the plaintiff was $1 million. And after negotiated settlement, our insurance carrier, AIG, settled for an amount of $70,000. The entire $70,000 will be paid by our insurance carriers. Is our deductible in cases like this is $25,000. So, that was basically a business decision made on behalf of AIG weighing the cost of going to trial, which we were, the attorneys were extremely confident that we would that we would win the case, but yet it would come at more, incur more cost to the company.
I move the superintendent's recommendation, having heard the additional other details in a discussion yesterday. I guess I'm not supposed to say that, but I did-
We were in executive session yesterday.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes. School of Arts and Sciences Foundation property disposal?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I also come to talk to you about buses. So, the School of Arts and Sciences Foundation, which is the governing body for the School of Arts and Sciences on Thomasville and the center, has requested our permission to dispose of five buses. Per their contract, any disposal of property greater than, worth more than $750 requires our written permission.
Have a motion?
So, move, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Power School Group applicant tracking system.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent and Board members. You will recall during our last agenda review and workshop, Mary Nicholson, who is our awesome director of HR, Brian Boyd, they did a presentation on our new applicant tracking system. A timeline was presented to you so that we can have everything in place by March of 2020. We're on track with that. You spoke that you were very, very delighted with the changes that will be taking place with the applicant tracking system. So, tonight, we're bringing before you the contracts so that we can continue to move forward. We had to bring it because we already have multiple contracts with Power School.
Have a motion?
Move the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Can't wait. Can't wait.
I tell ya. So, I didn't-
Elder Care Services contract?
Good evening again. This is an annual contract with Elder Care Services for $40,000. It will place foster grandparents in our schools. We will have 36 that will be working with our pre-K through second grade students as well as, I'm sorry, 34 working with our pre-K through second grade students. And we'll have six that will be working with our ESE population.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose. That's another great program.
Thank you.
1906 is a PTSA with the school board. And here comes Dr. Rogers.
Evening. Good evening. This is an agreement between AMI Kids to sublease their building to house our new second chance school. So, which leads me into, let me stop.
Do it at a time. Do I have a motion?
Move motion.
Second.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify, this item is actually the PTSA.
This is a PTSA.
Yeah, this first item is the PTSA. The second item is the sublease, just for clarity.
So, this item, the PTSA, I apologize, I'm moving too fast, is wherein we have contracted with AMI Kids to provide behavior modification services for our second chance students. And that, those services will be by Mrs. Shannon Baker of AMI Kids. Mr. Baker was the director of AMI Kids. As you are aware, AMI Kids, as they were, is no longer serving the district in that capacity, but they did want to have a presence and we have thus partnered with them and they're providing our behavior modification program for our gyms.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes. And next is the relocation of second chance school.
And the relocation of the school, we have thus moved second chance program from the Gasbini Learning Center to what was AMI Kids building. So, we have what you see in front of you, 19.07 is a sub-sub lease. We have sub leased from AMI Kids so that we can house our program second chance there. This was our superintendent's vision to separate those students and these are students who typically would be what we call the DSWs, drug, sex and weapons. Those kids would now be housed on that particular property.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Okay, so let's see what we have. We're down to superintendent's comments. Can you speak?
Yes, I can, you know, again, it's us in here. I just want to offer my sincere apologies. But we'll get to the bottom of what took place. It's unacceptable. Yes, there will be blame and there will be action taken for the immediate future. I gotta take care of the children and the parents and our employees that were here this evening and the ones that were not here. But I can assure you that we will take action swiftly and it will happen, we're not waiting two weeks. What I've told our folks is just get us through the end of this week. An analogy, it's like we got on a bicycle, the bicycle was broken. The problem is, we have to keep riding that bicycle until we get a new bicycle because we can't stop that bicycle to fix it unless we don't have school. So, that's why we've, and I'm not sure what the woman experienced at heart, a story apart, but I can assure you all that we are having, providing before and after school care coverage at all of our elementary schools. Sometimes, you know, people get emotional when they stand at that podium. I get it. I get it because their life has been affected and, you know, it comes with this job, right? But some of the things that are said may not quite be as accurate as they're being stated, but I can assure you that we are gonna do everything we possibly can to get this corrected. And we're having an announcement tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m. of the corrector action we're gonna take, having gotten recommendations from both Edgelog and Mr. Joannus, but also having heard from our people and our drivers. We all had good intentions. We had high expectations and high hopes. Do you have anything else to say? Other than tomorrow morning will come, we'll take an action and we'll move forward for next week.
Question. So, you're planning to let us know your intention about that action before you make a public announcement or not?
No, absolutely. Yeah, we'll definitely communicate with you. I'm having a meeting later tonight with transportation staff to see, it's somewhat premature of me to announce changes right now.
I understand. I just wanted to-
And given also that today was the second day of school.
I'm wondering if you've considered utilizing the, I can't remember the formal name for it, but basically it's a robo-call from you to parents?
Yes, we can certainly look, we can certainly look at it.
I just, I think the thing that we've heard over and over and over is, "Too little, too late. Why didn't we know? What do we know? When can we know?"
And so, some of the, you know, some of the frustration when you have so many affected, it's not, we have, just about everybody in here's been fielding phone calls, I can assure you. We're not running from the-
Have been too.
We're not, I know, but I'm just saying, we're not running from the phone line. It probably would be easier, better if it rang busy as opposed to just ringing. But like you said, with the volume, we're not set up as a call center, but we have had all hands on deck fielding and returning as many phone calls as we possibly can. And hopefully after our announcement tomorrow morning, we're gonna bring a lot of that anxiety, that anxiety level down and then work very hard and quickly to first address, like we talked about, the exceptional student education, transportation. We've moved Fred Johnson back over to Everheart. Jane Ford-Bullin felt good about the way things were going in Everheart. We get the other folks with special needs, make sure they have the transportation and then to look district wide. We're gonna make it right, I promise you. All right, we all took a gamble, I think we had, it wasn't because of lack of planning, but sometimes, you know, when you have ventures like this, and we were very optimistic, people overpromise and underdeliver. You know? And this may be a case of being overpromised and underdelivered and we'll do whatever we need to do to remedy that, I can assure you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any continuing concerns or new issues from board members? Continuing concerns first, new issues. I want to just try to end on a positive note here. It seems like we had a really great opening of school at our schools and that the principals were ready, the teachers were ready. I've heard nothing but positive things about how it's going once they get to school. So, we just want to thank our teachers, thank our principals for, you know, and I know, Superintendent, that that's where you spent the bulk of your attention and your time, getting all that in place. And so, you know, sometimes we expect other people to do the other jobs. And I know that you spent, because we've been around, you've been working on getting the principals and so forth. And so, I just want to congratulate the schools. The children are doing well, they're safe and that's the bottom line. And we'll get this transportation thing fixed, but I don't want us to lose the forest for the trees. And the forest is, we had a great school opening at all of our schools and that took a lot, a lot of work. And we need to be grateful and thankful for that.
We do. And I thank you for kind of putting, bringing some clarity back, bringing me back to the forest. Because of the schools I went to, I went to visit Conlee, Godby, the faculties of, I mean, our teachers seem very, I know, I'm married, she's very excited this school year. I mean, so our administrations and our teachers were there welcoming kids with open arms on Monday and they're gonna adjust as our administrators and adapt to this situation, this, you know, this busing situation until we get it corrected. That's just what teachers do, you know? And unfortunately, I will tell a story. My wife was working with a child during her class to make sure she knew the bus route, the bus route number. And the student, she asked the student, "What's, well, what's your address?" And the student said, "Well, I'm not sure." And then she said, "Well, I live in an apartment complex. Do you know the name of it?" "Well, no, but it's down a couple of streets over." A lot of our kids, unfortunately, they don't know their addresses. And we've gotten so used to technology and cell phones and you put a phone in front of them and it's like, "What is that thing?" And it's like, "Call Dad." You know, that's what-
Right.
But we're working through some of those things and, you know, and things are different these days. I remember when I was a student in Leon County, the bus list was published, you found the street that was closest and you walked. And of course, you know, for your parents, it was two miles uphill both ways in the snow or the blizzard or the cold or the rain or whatever. But we're trying, and we will, we are going to try to be as accommodating as we possibly can, but also keeping safety, it's always safety, safety, safety first. And those safety conditions, we will address immediately.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, well, with that, I think our meeting's adjourned. Thank you.